Mayor Morley and Junior Mayor Eva would like to call this meeting to order. And we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance, okay? And Girl Scout Troop, one, twenty-four, and a few others are going to lead us in the pledge, okay? All right, we've got a lot of people here, so we're going to be loud, okay? And go.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the free public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job. Good job. This is the most synthetical pledge I've ever heard.
Nice job, ladies. Nice job, ladies.
Spencer, I'd ask that you call the roll.
Thought I did that, okay. Doiter.
Here.
Zappatino.
Here.
Leader.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Bram.
Here.
Palmsky.
Here.
York.
Here.
Toledo.
Here.
Healy.
Here.
Levin.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Hanquist.
Here.
Wagner.
Here.
Mulliner.
Here.
Fourteen present, no absent.
Fourteen present, zero absent. We have a quorum, and we also have a special occasion this evening. I'm going to ask Tom to meet me, the athletic director, who's already over there, to meet me down by the podium for special recognition. What we like to do in the city of Elmhurst, especially when our kids go downstate and win it, is we like to have an opportunity to bring the team to City Hall and allow the elected officials to officially congratulate them. This is all about the kids. I don't want to take up any of that time. I will say that I do have an official proclamation here from the city of Elmhurst, and has a lot of nice whereases in all of your accomplishments for the year, but I'll read the important part. Now therefore, I, Steve Morley, Mayor of the city of Elmhurst, with great pride congratulate the 2016 IC Catholic Prep Knights Varsity Football Team on their victory of bringing home the state championship for the third time proclaimed December nineteenth, 2016, as IC Catholic Prep Knights Varsity Football Team Day. Congratulations. I know your athletic director and one of the coaches would like to say a few words.
Just very briefly, we would like to thank the city of Elmhurst and the community for all of the support as we went through this run for a state title. The support and the community was great. Our crowds were awesome. We were fortunate to host three straight home games to start, and it was very evident that the community was behind us. So, thank you very much for all of your support. I'd like to ask Coach Bowen to come up here and say a few words about the team.
My name is Matt Bowen. I'm the defensive back coach at IC Catholic Prep. Our head coach cannot be here tonight. There's an illness in the family. He cannot be here. So, I'm speaking on his behalf. I don't want to be too long, but I want everyone here to recognize this football team. We don't have all of our players here tonight, but a good group of our players are here tonight. They were excellent this year, obviously. Fourteen and oh season. Go downstate, win the state championship, forty-three to nothing. They were a perfect team, okay? When I talk about perfect teams in athletics, if you were to watch a game, Phil, not everything is perfect, but they're perfect in what they do, okay? First of all, every one of these kids, they're multi-sport athletes, okay? They're leaders in the school community. Our senior captains, if you were to look at their ACT scores, you would be blown away. I would think they are thirty-six, thirty-five, thirty-four, okay? I could only dream of that when I was in high school. They're tough kids. What I mean tough kids in football, everyone thinks tough is physicality. That's part of our game, but they're tough mentally. They're well-seasoned kids. They play together as a team, and we are not loaded with Division One athletes, okay? We have special players. Special players that play tough together, that work through adversity. Adversity's a big thing in our program. How do you deal with adversity? Because there's a coach. The greatest thing you can have is to set these kids up for life, and that's what we do in our program. Winning a state championship is great, and that's going to help them throughout life. But more importantly, we want to develop them so they're ready for college, they're ready to be husbands, they're ready to be fathers. That's why I coach, that's why our coaches that are here, that's why they coach. We have these big game plans. All right, Coach Navagat, our offensive coordinator, his game plan looks like a dinner menu, okay? It's massive, all right? Loaded with plays. Well, also, one thing we talk about, you have a game plan for life. As adults, we understand that, is you have a game plan, you think it's going to work, and what happens? You rip that thing up about three times a year, right? Maybe three times a day, okay? It's another thing we teach in terms of building our student-athletes, and they really are student-athletes, okay? This is not college football, this is not professional football, all right? This is the last line of competitive innocence, in my opinion, and that's what we do. We compete. We compete on the field, we compete off the field, we compete in the classroom, we compete in the school community, okay? And this team will remember this year forever. We will remember it as coaches, but these seniors that are leaving have set this program up for a long time. They've set standards of excellence on the field, in the classroom, in the hallways, what they do in their other sports. And the best thing about our kids, they compete all year round, okay? Whether it's moving on to basketball now, wrestling. In the spring, they move on lacrosse, track and field, and to baseball. In the summer, we pick football back up again, okay? More importantly, what I want everyone here to understand is these are quality kids, really they're quality young men. They're going to be successful whatever they do in life. As coaches, we just sit back and watch them, okay? We can put together those game plans, we talk technique, we talk about what we do at practice, but they were the leaders of this team. They were the leaders of this football team. And in my opinion, they were perfect this year. The record says they were perfect, but I know, as young men, they were extremely perfect. I'm honored to be here. All of our coaches are honored to be here, the ones that couldn't be as well, but we're honored for how they played and how they represented our school. Perfect season, great group of kids. Thank you very much.
All right, now, I'm going to ask all players and managers and everyone who helped bring a state championship here to Elmhurst to... The elected officials want to personally thank each and every one of you, so what I'm going to ask you to do is come around the podium here, starting with Alderman Hanquist, where I'd like to shake your hand. So, the entire group, if you can come through.
Congratulations. Thanks for coming out. Congratulations. Great job. Great honor. Thanks for being here.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Well-represented, nice job.
You aren't seniors, are you? Oh, wow. That's fantastic. So, there's more to come, right? All right. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Coach.
Congratulations. Thanks for being here. Congratulations. Great job. Great honor. Thanks for being here.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Well-represented, nice job.
You aren't seniors, are you?
Oh, wow. That's fantastic. So, there's more to come, right? All right. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Great job. Great honor. Thanks for being here.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Well-represented, nice job.
You aren't seniors, are you?
Congratulations. Oh, wow. That's fantastic. So, there's more to come, right? All right. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Good luck. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Great handshakes. I appreciate that, gentlemen. Congratulations. Wow. And this is only part of the team, huh?
Oh, thanks. Christmas time. Yours probably looks like you just got a game-waking truce going. Congratulations.
Congratulations. How many of these are hipsters?
You guys are tired of me, weren't you?
One number, are they?
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Twenty-four and fifty-five. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Nice job. Way to represent Elmhurst, guys. Love it. Congratulations. I suspect I'll see some of you guys sit out here once, right?
Congratulations.
Congratulations. That's a heck of a choice. Congratulations, guys. Thanks for coming out.
Congratulations.
Tom?
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
There's the third of it.
Congratulations.
I'm telling him he's up front.
Congratulations.
That's why he gets a game trophy.
Good job. Congratulations. Hey, there it is.
Congratulations.
You got a couple more steps.
Two.
Only two.
Actually, you guys should be just circling back, so don't even step.
Congratulations.
Watch where you're going.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations, guys. Thanks for coming out.
Congratulations.
Tom?
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
There's the third of it.
Congratulations.
I'm telling him he's up front.
Congratulations.
That's why he gets a game trophy.
Good job.
Congratulations.
Hey, there it is.
Congratulations.
You got a couple more steps.
Two.
Only two.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Actually, you guys should be just circling back, so don't even step.
Congratulations.
Watch where you're going.
Congratulations.
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 Good to see you.
Oh, you must be the captain of the team.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Watch your step.
Congratulations.
Watch your step.
Congratulations.
How'd you get her?
That was a lot, man. My hands.
Thirty-five.
I know, it's awesome, isn't it?
Ooh.
Hey, Jimmy. Jimmy, his skin's turned in there?
Yeah, one of them.
Well, he said two, well, he's got two on the team, but I don't think he wants them all.
Fifty-six. Somebody gave his number last night.
Oh, it was, I mean...
Which is probably not good, probably.
Yeah.
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 We give out blocks of money. Elmhurst Chamber of Commerce gets them. Under Freedom of Information, I ask about how they spend it. They don't have to say a word about it. But a council member asks about the American Legion. It's gotta go to committee, they gotta open their books, they gotta show up, they gotta plead their case for thirty grand. But the Chamber of Commerce, Elmhurst Symphony, everybody else, they just get it, spend it, and if you ask how they spend it, this council doesn't care.
Mr. Pragash, I'd ask you to wrap up your comments.
So until this council starts caring, and I mean about the residents, because at five-hundred-thousand dollars, you don't have a printing press in a basement. It's public money.
Sarah Steinhoff.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for having me tonight. My name's Sarah, and I'm the Operations Manager at Brew Point Coffee. And I'm just here to share a little bit about my experience. I wandered into Brew Point about a year ago, and I was a graduating senior from Elmhurst College, and I was looking for just a part-time job, just to make some money. And I sat down with Melissa for what turned into three hours, talking about the possibilities of getting involved with a startup company. I have an organizational communication and business degree, and the opportunities seemed endless. We just clicked on a personal level, and listening to her just vision and values behind what was so seemingly and flawless, a really good organizational culture. It was very apparent that everyone loved working there, and I quickly found a home in working at Brew Point Coffee. I just wanted to share that my, Melissa as a mentor, has meant the world to me, and the community that I've been able to build and become a part of here in Elmhurst is untradable, and I appreciate any and all considerations and support you guys have given us thus far, and I'm just really appreciative to Melissa Angelo and the team at Brew Point, and for all of your support. So I just wanted to thank you for that, so.
Okay, Melissa Villanueva.
Hello. So for those of you who don't know, my name is Melissa Villanueva, and I am the owner of Brew Point Coffee. Our journey and our story has been unexpected. It has been humbling and has been altogether incredible. I wanted to take a chance to thank the city of Elmhurst and the community of Elmhurst, because all that you do and all your investment, it's what makes this city whole, it's what makes this city grow, and I know that we have been the recipients of so much love and care and support. And if there's anything that we want you to get out of this meeting from Brew Point, is that we are so grateful to be able to serve the community of Elmhurst. The first thing I want to establish is that we are in common ground. We all want to see Elmhurst flourish economically, financially, creatively, communally. We may not always see things eye to eye, but altogether, what our agenda specifically is about is finding out if Brew Point is the right fit to accomplish these goals. And so with that, I come to you as a community member of Elmhurst, not just a business owner, to say that I have a platform, and I have a plan. And so our platform is Brew Point Coffee. It is a thriving business on the verge of becoming much bigger than it already is. We already, we're going from being a coffee shop to a full-service coffee company with sourcing, roasting, and more retail establishments. And after much deliberation, we believe that staying in Elmhurst is a perfect location and community for us to centralize our business. And so we have a plan. Our plan is to take an unused loading dock at the corner of York and Crestview and convert it into a roasting site and a cafe overlooking our operations. This will be a destination location for coffee lovers in the whole western suburbs, an anchor tenant to attract other like-minded businesses, a space for innovation, creativity, many events like art events and music events, places to bring the community together. We're investing a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in our own resources. We will be increasing local jobs from our current number of seventeen to thirty in our first full year. And altogether, we will create the perfect next step for the city of Elmhurst to accomplish their North York Plan. And so I had sent out an email to all the aldermen earlier today, and I included the North York Plan and how all the things that we want to accomplish in the North York corridor lines up with what the North York Plan has in place. And so there's many different things, and I don't have time to go into all of it, but essentially, it's looking for a destination location, it's looking for an anchor tenant, it's looking for a business to help rebrand this area and to bring in other like-minded businesses. And if you've seen what we've done, and if you believe in what we do, and you find that this is a good fit for Elmhurst, we would encourage that when our report is being voted on, that is something that you strongly consider, because we believe that everything that we are bringing to the table will hit the nail on the head for the North York Plan. So all this to say, thank you. Thank you for all that you do. We appreciate it.
Angelo Sepulveda. Did I get that right?
Hello, yes, you got that right. I'm actually the husband, so thank you guys so much for allowing us some time to speak to you directly tonight. I've been in Elmhurst now two years, originally from Gurnee. Spent thirty or so years in Gurnee, and I can say in the last two years of running a business here in Elmhurst, I know more people here, and I'm more often able to recognize people in the community and be recognized, for better or for worse, when out shopping, et cetera, than in my whole thirty years in Gurnee. And so we have very quickly integrated ourselves into this community and found it very supportive, very encouraging, very much desiring what we have been able to offer since coming here. And so we really appreciate you guys giving us this opportunity to be considered, to be supported by the city. One thing I did want to highlight during this opportunity to speak is that we're doing our best to approach you as humbly as we can, as intentionally as we can, as thoughtfully as we can, in terms of realizing and acknowledging that what we're asking for is indeed a good chunk of support and a vote of confidence from you guys. And we have tried to do our best to be mindful of that, to be thoughtful and respectful to the people of Elmhurst and to you who are in this position that you have to consider how to use the funds that you have collected. And in doing so, we do want to also acknowledge that like our plan is intentional. There is a reason that we're targeting the place that we're targeting, and there is a reason that we're looking at the north side of Elmhurst. I do believe that we can pretty easily say that the north side of Elmhurst feels different, and likely the people that live there have a different experience of the city than people like myself and my wife who live in downtown. And so our ideal, our goal, is to develop authentic community spaces. And that is what we aim to do with every decision that we make. Coffee is our foot in the door to developing community spaces, to developing community support, and to connecting with the people that we find ourselves surrounded by. So that is our goal for this next space. We really appreciate all the time and energy and attention that you've already dedicated to this consideration, and we thank you guys for listening to our comments tonight. We just hope that you will see the plan and vision that we have established and find it to be something that you believe is viable here in the city, and is worth investing in, and is something that hopefully you can also see that we can do it and do it well. So we thank you again, and thank you for your consideration.
Bill Trudeau, 291 East Valette.
Hi, Bill Trudeau, 291 East Valette. I live at the corner of Poplar and Valette, right along the Prairie Path. I moved from, I lived on the west end of town for seventeen years and moved to this home six years ago. And I'm here because traffic has gotten really weird in town over the last twenty-five years, and pretty congested in that. And the home that I moved to is kind of, I'm sure there's many homes in town that are unique in the layout of how the streets intersect and not necessarily the best setup in the world. My driveway is within an intersection, and the intersection is, it's offset. When I moved there six years ago, it was configured a little differently, and then the city, when Valette was rebuilt five years ago, reconfigured some of the intersections and either spread them out or squared them off. But I find myself in the, probably not a unique circumstance, but risk my life pulling into my driveway every day. And four days ago, finally, I guess my string of luck ran out, where I was pulling into my driveway, and got hit by somebody that ran the stop sign at Valette and Poplar and the Prairie Path. So I guess what I'm asking is, I'm not sure exactly how to go about this. I've talked to someone in the past about, you know, maybe having a police presence there occasionally just to see how many people run the stop sign, but I put a security camera in, a couple of them in my garage, a while back after the home right across the street from me had their door kicked in at noon. And you watch the security video, and it's well over a hundred cars an hour blow the stop sign at Valette and Poplar southbound. And this goes on two hours, from seven AM to nine AM, and four PM to six PM, every day. And that's, it's well over a hundred cars just going southbound. I don't have the camera set up so you can see all directions. I guess what I'm asking, human nature isn't gonna change, traffic is abysmal, people are gonna keep blowing the stop sign, it's just the way things are right now. If there's anything that could be done with that southbound stop sign to put a, I noticed in Hillside, they have like a stop sign with flashing LEDs and a little solar panel on it. If there's anything that could be done, traffic's not gonna slow down, there's not gonna be any less people, there's not gonna be people that change their habit unless there's either a police presence constantly, or something changes with that stop sign. And I guess I'm lucky that nobody else in my family ever got hit, it was just a matter of time, but it's, the last video I looked at, ninety-three cars in a row blew the stop sign. So it's not like it's unusual, it's really unusual when someone stops at it. So, thank you very much.
Kathleen Sullivan.
Kathleen Sullivan. What a difference a year makes. Two thousand and sixteen, from the standpoint of those of us who've experienced serious flooding in Elmhurst, was a really big year, and we'd like to thank the Public Works Committee for all of your hard work, the Public Works Department and team for all their hard work, all the citizens, all the community leaders, the mayor, for running all the stormwater meetings. Thank you all very much for all you did. As you reflect on your accomplishments from this year, this is definitely one. Thank you.
That's all who signed in, Mayor.
Okay, that's it for public comment for those who signed in. At this time, is there anybody in the audience who did not have an opportunity to sign up for a sign-in sheet but wishes to address council? Please raise your hand so I can get an idea how many we have. One, two, three, four, five, six. I see six, seven-ish.
Anybody who signed up?
You did sign up. Did you miss Roz?
Hi. Roz, I don't know, I don't see you.
That's all right, we'll get to you.
Right over there on the table?
All right, we're going, we're gonna go left to right, so everyone raise your hand and keep them up for just a second. All right, I'm gonna start here, the gentleman in the tie, and the guy in the back holding up the red pen, then Roz Long will take care of this side. So the gentleman here, the tie and the sweater, if you could make your way to same, we found Roz's name.
We found you, Roz.
Roz, you exist. Give us a minute.
We're under Claude, and I didn't notice it.
We'll get you in just a minute. Okay, sir, your name and, or your comments.
Distinguished aldermen and elderwomen, my name is Anastas Kurti, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant who requested an application of variances with respect to a project, and my comments would be in response to anything else that the opposition would have in this case, so I would like to yield the floor to the speaker here, the attorney for the opposing party, and if there is anything I would like, you know, to respond, I would like to reserve the right to do so. If not, I can briefly give you-
This is your, this is your one chance, so anything you wanna say.
I appreciate it, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that, because again, I walked in a little bit late, didn't get a chance to sign in with a clerk there. So my name is Anastas Kurti, I'm the attorney representing the applicant. Thank you for the opportunity to be heard. The applicant here, Sadiq LLC, has a project in place. The case number is sixteen P-ten, and this is regarding the gem car wash. The project requires one conditional use and four variances, and at the first meeting, you know, the zoning and planning commission, after hearing the case, subsequently approved the application as presented, the application for the conditional use together with the four variances, and then the development, planning, and zoning committee subsequently discussed and deliberated the matter over three sessions, where the applicant, the architect, the builder, the equipment supplier, and the traffic engineer were present, and then they had their feedback. Pursuant to the feedback, the applicant modified the plans, and then subsequently the DCP approved the plans with a few modifications, one of them being the reduction of the sign signage, and the other one allowing for ingress, and allowing for the cars to be able to exit the premises before reaching the car tunnel. So that's the report and the recommendation of the DCP before you, and on behalf of the applicant, without taking too much more time, I urge you to vote approving the recommendation of DCP as presented before this honorable council. Thank you.
Okay, since she, Roz, we're gonna let you go next, since you're on the, signed up originally.
Hi, I'm Roz Long, and first I wanted to thank you all, the aldermen, for doing all the work that you've been doing this past year. Really appreciate your support of the arts. As I said, my name is Roz Long, and I have been a resident of Elmhurst for thirty-eight years, and I have two sons, Ryan and Scott Long. My company is RGL Marketing for the Arts. I am the founder of many art venues in Elmhurst, including the Twenty-First Annual Art in the Park, the Holiday Market, the Girls' Night Out, Liberty Arts Building, Art at Night, and many other events. My partners have included the city of Elmhurst, Explore Elmhurst, Elmhurst Park District, Elmhurst City Center, Elmhurst Art Museum, Lizardro Museum of Lapidary Art, Elmhurst College, Lakeside Bank, Edward Jones, Microsoft Container Store, Whole Foods, Pottery Barn, and many others. My presenting sponsors have included Panera Bread, Rum and Board, Edward Jones, and now Brew Point Coffee. That is why I'm here. I am very, very proud of the fact that Brew Point Coffee is the presenting sponsor for all my events for two thousand and seventeen. I have been a visionary with the art scene in Elmhurst for over twenty-two years, and I'm very proud that our enriched community has supported the arts. Melissa, owner of Brew Point Coffee, is an amazing visionary who has reached out to so many residents of Elmhurst with her business savvy and giving back to the community. I believe Brew Point's insightful vision and business model for the expansion of the roasting site and second coffee shop will be an incredible addition to the north side of Elmhurst. Melissa, Angelo, and their awesome staff will create a tourist destination for the western suburbs. As we know, the arts and coffee shops go hand in hand. I am very excited that I will be collaborating with Brew Point Coffee to bring art venues and educational programs to their new location. I am very proud of Melissa, Angelo, and their staff. They are a dream team that every town would love to have work with them. Thank you for your time.
Okay, the gentleman over here would raise his hand. I think that's it for the left-hand side.
Hi, thank you. I'm Dan Woolfilet, Daniel Woolfilet Design, resident of Elmhurst for seventeen years and a small business owner for the past eight. I'm also very blessed to be the architect of Brew Point Coffee, and normally I would come to meetings years ago as a representative of McDonald's Corporation, and I would have to try to sell McDonald's to a city. And I would use the, I would use the term "think globally" and "act locally," and I got paid big dollars for that, and I didn't really believe it, so therefore I retired early and opened my own business. Well, if you look at Brew Point, they really think locally, but they do act community. And it's not really just return on investment for them, it's return on community, so it's ROC. And just, when you meet, when you meet people, sometimes it's a blink of the eye, it takes just, it's just a blink, and you know if they have it or if they don't. And Melissa and Angelo have blown me away the first day I walked in their coffee shop. My, my office is near theirs, and I saw what they did, I saw the old coffee shop, I saw the new, and I knew this was something I wanted to be a part of if I possibly could. So I've been lucky enough to design many structures throughout Chicago and actually throughout the world, but this one I'd be really proud of, and I'd love to jump on their bandwagon, and just want to hopefully that you see, you see the same, and vote for them and give them the best they can. Thanks so much, take care.
Okay, on this side of the room, show of hands again. Okay, we'll start with this gentleman first with the tie in front, and then we'll go to the two gentlemen behind, and what's his name in the back?
My name is Michael Morrisrowell, I'm an attorney, my office is in Bloomingdale, Illinois, and I represent the owners of nine fifty-four North York. First, thank you for allowing me to speak without signing in, I could not get past the offensive line that was present here today. Great result for them as well. When we talk about this particular project, Sadiq, which is the car wash, I would like the council to think about several key insalient points, and one is the intensity of use of this particular site. It is a hundred feet wide. This particular applicant has repeatedly referenced Jet Bright car washes as its exemplar model, and each of the Jet Bright car washes that have been referred to in Addison Villa Park, and the one that's nearest me in Carroll Stream, the lots are substantially greater and all are at least two hundred feet wide, and the purpose of that is car management. This community, and I live close enough to have experienced it myself, has seen the results of poor onsite car management with Delta Sonic. We've seen the cars backed up into the road, impeding traffic and creating congestion and hazard for other people. And it is our belief as an adjoining property owner, that's exactly what we're gonna be facing here with this particular car wash. It's asked for exceptions to the stacking ordinance, and its own, their own information, they said they're gonna have two hundred cars per hour go through the car wash with ninety-one vacuums for the car wash. Mathematically, that does not add up. Their competitors, the Jet Bright that they reference, has twice the number of vacuum stations that this particular car wash is proposing. Part of that reason is they're bigger, they're better planned out, and I think most telling is a letter from Mr. Delisandro, who owns Jet Bright, who I think took a little offense that he was being used as an example by someone who wasn't actually part of the Jet Bright franchise, but he said he went through his exact process with a hundred-foot-wide site and it failed. The city got involved, traffic tickets were issued, congestion ensued, all because there wasn't that planning of forethought as to how to best manage car traffic on a particular site. And I would suggest to you that the time to act on that is now. Once the site is built and the owner has unfortunately invested several million dollars in developing this site, there won't be an ability to fix it. There is nowhere else to go. That traffic is gonna back up directly onto York. And I know my time is limited here tonight, I'd just like to bring one, one comment full circle as well. I've heard a lot of talk about Brew Point Coffee tonight, who I, I'm not familiar with them, but they're in that same locale. And I would suggest to you that the North York part of Elmhurst deserves more than having one more car wash. This will make four. The city's done a commendable job in both the athletic center that's being built up north and the Mariano's, when I shop at myself, and car wash is not gonna add in developing the North York corridor. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, you, sir.
Hello, my name is Costi Curry. I've lived in North Elmhurst for the last thirty-five years. I also own the property which my father built some fifty years ago at nine fifty-four North York Road in Elmhurst. I also own property at six thirty-nine North York Road. Elmhurst has got a lot of codes and ordinances on their books, they're designed for the different reasons, to keep Elmhurst values high, for high quality of life, but most importantly, for a safe environment for its residents. When you have to ask for such drastic variances as the applicant's car for the gem car wash, that's why I was here talking, I forgot to tell you that. Seventy percent side yard, forty percent sign height increase, twenty-five percent sign area increase, and a forty-one percent reduction in vehicle stacking ordinance. This should raise a flag that the applicants have just chosen the wrong site for their project. Simply put, they're trying to build a Walmart on a lot that is only large enough for a Walgreens. You might think, well, this project passed the zoning and planning commission and the DP and Z committee, therefore it must be okay. I was president, present at all of these meetings. During the deliberation portion of the zoning and planning commission, just prior to the vote, there was some confusion on whether or not the vehicle stacking ordinance applied to this project, or was only intended for fast food restaurant drive-throughs, and it was implied that it did not apply to a car wash and should not influence the commission's decision. Only after the vote and on a later date was it determined that in fact, Elmhurst has one stacking ordinance for fast food drive-throughs and another one specifically for car washes. Now even if you feel that this ordinance is a little too strict, the proposed site does not miss the required number by three, five, or ten vehicles. They are twenty-two vehicles short. At the DP and Z meetings, there was no discussion about side yard setbacks, most of the discussion was about signage. When the topic of traffic or vehicle stacking was brought up, it was quickly dismissed and stated the engineer signed off on it. Now, there's a traffic report which was submitted, bought and paid for by the applicants. This traffic study is fifty-four pages long, and for fifty-three and three-quarters pages, it talks about traffic on York Road, gaps in traffic, and the ability to make left to right turn, right turns. There was less than only two sentences where they addressed vehicle stacking. They only say that the site has been designed for adequate queuing, however, these volumes greatly affected by weather and may change from day to day. In other words, stacking won't be a problem on rainy days, but could be a problem on sunny days. The engineers report, wrote a memo, Mr. Coulter wrote a memo to staff which was submitted, and this is the memo that DP and Z referred to when the statement was made that engineer signed off on it. I urge you to read this memo in full, and there's at least four or five concerns in there, one being stacking. It doesn't sound like he signed off on anything to me.
Sir, you're over your three minutes, I'd ask you to wrap it up.
All right. There's also the letter from Mr. Delisandro was submitted after the zoning and planning vote, which Mr. DeSello, DeSella, built, owns, and operates at least four of these car washes and has done so for many years. I think his comments in this letter should be taken seriously, which I quote, "As the owner of Jet Bright car washes, we originally purchased our Addison and Villa Park properties as hundred-foot-wide properties. In both locations, we found great difficulty in operating this type of car wash on such a narrow piece of property. In both cases, the property constraints led to large traffic control issues. These issues included backups onto the main road. The result was numerous complaints from police departments." Now, you may look at me only opposing this project as a competing car wash, but North Elmhurst has been my home for a long time, and I have no plans on moving anywhere else. I'm not here asking you to change anything, only to enforce the codes and ordinances that are already in place. Thank you for your time, and I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas.
Okay, gentleman in the hat.
How you doing? I'm Jeff Giuliano, nine fifty-four North York Road, Elmhurst. Everyone keeps bringing up Jet Bright car wa, I'm in, speaking in opposition to the Jet Bright car wash, by the way. Everyone keeps talking about Jet Bright. My main concern here is- My main concern here is that it's safety. I don't want to see excessive traffic stacking all over the roadways, creating a safety hazard in our town. Today was a five-degree day with some sun, and I would call it a moderate-type car wash day. While I was out and about, I happened to snap a couple pictures of the two Jet Bright spots that were built on 100-foot lots and expanded to 200-foot lots. All these pictures, which I submitted, but I thought you guys would be able to see them, but you didn't. They all show vehicles stacking in both directions all over the road, both in the Villa Park location and in the Addison location. You can see, I mean, here, there's three cars in each direction backed up, waiting to get in. I wish I could show you guys these, but I guess it doesn't allow. My concern is safety. I don't want to see the north end jammed up. We have a car wash, that's true. When our car wash was built, we did not apply for any variances. My grandfather and his father built the car wash in 1969. We're not asking for much, all we want to see is the north end kept proper and not cars stacked up all over the place. It's going to jam up the entire north end of town. So, that's all. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Mr. Quigley, I think you're the last one. Oh, I'm sorry. We're still in public forum, so if you want to be recognized, raise your hand. And you can make your way to the microphone, state your name, and address council if so choose. So before we move on then, if there is anybody else, let me get a raise of hands. Anybody else who wants to address council? I know Mr. Quigley does. Is there anyone else? All right. John?
Thank you, good evening. John Quigley, President and CEO, Elmhurst Chamber of Commerce and Industry, 300A West Lake Street, Suite 201, Elmhurst, Illinois. I hadn't intended to speak tonight, but I need to address the misinformation by an earlier speaker regarding the Elmhurst Chamber. In 2016, the only funds the Chamber requested and received from the city was to organize and stage the 98th Annual Memorial Day Parade last May. Those monies came from an Explore Elmhurst grant funded by the 4% hotel room sales tax. No, I repeat, no, property taxpayer dollars were spent on the parade. In addition, the Chamber staff and volunteers donated their time for the planning and staging of the parade. Grant money that was received paid for musical entries, programs, banners, signage, and mailings. For more than 20 years, the Chamber has stepped up to assist the city, American Legion, VFW, and Elmhurst Park District in making sure the Memorial Day Parade remains a premier community event. And if you care to fund us in 2017, you can count on another fine parade for our 99th anniversary next May. Thank you.
Okay. That's it for public forum this evening. That's everyone who raised your hand and everyone who signed up. We're going to move on to announcements. Agenda item six, any announcements from the dais? Seeing none, we'll go on to consent agenda. At this time, is there any item on the consent agenda? Any alderman wishes to have removed to vote no or provide additional comment? Alderman Bram?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, two items, 7.11 and 7.16.
7.11 and 7.16. Okay, any other items on the consent agenda? Anybody wishes to have removed? Seeing none, I will now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item 7.11 and 7.16. Motion to approve the consent agenda minus those items. Motion by Alderman York, second by Alderman Hanquist. Clerk Spencer?
Deuter?
Aye.
Sabatino?
Aye.
Leader?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Bram?
Aye.
Palomsky?
Aye.
York?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Healy?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Hanquist?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Mulliner?
Aye.
14 ayes, 0 nays.
14 ayes, 0 nays. Motion carries. Consent agenda is approved minus items 7.11 and 7.16. Onto item 7.11. This is a report out of Public Affairs and Safety. Clerk Spencer, I'd ask that you read the recommendation.
It is therefore the recommendation of the Public Affairs and Safety Committee that the city attorney be authorized to prepare the appropriate ordinance to amend 36.29 to add paragraph E, which permits the mayor to allow sales and consumption of alcohol liquor during hours whereby the sale of alcohol beverages is prohibited upon application by a current liquor licensee and showing of good cause for extended hours of operation by granting a temporary license to extend the hours of operation. Signed by Chris Healy, Chairman, Danny Palomsky, Vice Chairman, and Norm Leader.
Okay, to put this before council, I'll ask for a motion to approve the report and recommendation as read. Motion by Alderman Healy, second by Alderman Palomsky. Alderman Healy, your report.
Thank you, Mayor. This came about as a result of several requests that many of us had received from bar and restaurant owners that wanted to open, generally open early for sporting events. It was the most common request. Things like World Cup, whether it's World Cup of Soccer, World Cup of Hockey, English Premier League events, significant events that potentially would draw interest. And the bar owners and the restaurant owners said, you know, we'd like to be able to open early on specific events to be able to draw business. So we brought it to committee, vetted it with obviously a lot of public safety input, and agreed that the mayor, acting as liquor commissioner, should have the ability to, on a temporary basis, accept applications for extension of hours, you know, for a given day and a given event, and grant that approval, you know, without any additional counsel or staff support. So committee agreed that that was probably the right thing to do on a limited basis, and that's reflected in the report in front of you.
Okay. Alderman Bram, you pulled this?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have great concern over this current recommendation. As already stated, it is giving the power of one individual being the liquor commissioner the deciding factor on what should or should not be done for any request to extend or make early a liquor license. Currently today, the process is not this way. Currently today, that is not within Chapter 36.02, the powers and duties of the liquor commissioner. The liquor commissioner's role is currently today about revoking a liquor license, suspending a liquor license, and then re-granting the liquor license if they meet the requirements that they did not prior to the revocation. To add something like this, I believe this makes it very, very political. This should not be a political decision. This should have criteria. The criteria outlined in the report is showing of good cause. What does showing of good cause mean? There's no definition, there's no criteria. It is subjective of the individual who's making that choice. It should not be that way. An ordinance, especially something as serious as liquor, should be regulated per the code. What this is allowing to do is having an applicant come in for whatever reason, as Alderman Healy just stated, for various sporting events. When I asked one of the committee members earlier today on what sporting events in the past has this been requested of, and the example I was given was World Cup Soccer. Well, I'm not sure why we would make a change so significant for World Cup Soccer games that happen once every four years. I'm not familiar with all the events or all the requests in the past, and I'm not sure what happened or why they happened, or if they were allowed or if they were denied. If it wasn't in code, I would assume, and maybe it is not an accurate assumption, that all those requests were denied. But according to the meeting minutes from Public Affairs and Safety, it sounds like they have been requested and have been, some of which, I'm making that assumption as well, have been accepted as well. I'm not sure how we're going outside of our code to allow something as what I deem to be as serious as this. It shouldn't be a case-by-case basis judged by one individual. If a change like this is needed, it should be codified, just like according to our code in Chapter 36, New Year's either eve or day, as well as Christmas, is codified in our code. These are holidays that are specifically stated in our code. One of the, I don't know if it was Elm Fest or one of the events, I think it said a Chamber Fair. I don't know, don't quote me, Mr. Quigley. But another event in the city of Elmhurst was codified in the code to give the flexibility of that type of request. Like I've already stated, I think this makes this potentially, I shouldn't be so definitive, potentially a political decision. I don't know what the definition of good cause is, and I don't think anybody on the dais knows what the definition of good cause is. How can one individual decide that this is good cause by one applicant, but another applicant comes in and it's not good cause? I would hate to be sitting in that chair, making that decision for any possible liability if I denied a request but accepted a similar request before. I think if something like this is needed to move forward, it should have specific criteria in the code, not open-ended. We are a policymaking body. This should be a policy decision with a policy change, with a definitive process, with definitive criteria. I am strongly against this. I don't understand on how we could allow this. The committee also discussed according to the meeting minutes on how this parallels to sidewalk cafes and how sidewalk cafes are approved by the city manager and not by this body. But sidewalk cafes have a list of criteria that needs to be checked through before the city manager can approve them. And the city manager is city staff, not an elected official. Sidewalk cafes are nowhere close to what is being proposed here in regards to granting temporary license for liquor license. Thank you.
Alderman Healy?
Thank you. Couple points of clarification. First, item 7.10 on the consent agenda changes the code appropriately so that the liquor commissioner can, under the right circumstances, do this. So as far as the code goes, that is now allowed via the code. But the specific power of the liquor commissioner to grant it is this action. Couple things I had mentioned in rebuttal, you know, and you should never make assumptions. Sometimes calling and asking can clarify things. No temporary permits have been issued. So yes, plenty of requests have come in many times that have not been granted. So for the public and for the dais, there have been no extending of hours granted by the liquor commissioner. Secondly, there are plenty of instances, whether it's having to do with liquor or expenditure of funds, where we grant certain abilities to, whether it's city staff, the mayor, the liquor commissioner, without having to go through a whole big process. This would just be extending that. The liquor commissioner has the ability to grant a temporary license for an activity given dram shop and all those procedures are followed. This isn't that out of the ordinary. It just simply allows the mayor, with due cause, in his or her opinion, in this case, his opinion, that security concerns have been met, there are no public impacts, that public safety is... Their approval is not required, but certainly knowing, at least this liquor commissioner, those will be consulted. It's a pretty logical request, and I think it's a pretty logical report.
Alderman Palomsky?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to point out that this would only apply to businesses currently holding a liquor license, and they would have to be in good standing. When I talked with the mayor about it, it explained that there would be a form for an application for somebody to, a business to apply for this, and that there would be police review of this.
Anyone else who was not an opportunity to speak? Alderman Levin?
Just a point of clarification. I would have, I'm not opposed to the concept. I would have liked a little bit more detail of how it's going to work. But is there a fee associated with the application? Is it, I mean, five-finger discount?
Fifty.
Fifty dollars, all right. I hope that when the ordinance comes around, that maybe it could go back to the committee or that there's some input, because I feel like there's a lot. I understand the reasoning, and I can see that it might be difficult to run, let's say, you know, say the Bears won the Super Bowl, I mean, something, just something fantastic. And then you want to be open that day. By the time we run through the committee process, might be a long time. But I would like to see more detail in the report what the fee is, because it's very open-ended right now. But that's my comment.
Alderman Mulliner?
I guess my only concern about this is that I don't want to see this be a situation where somebody comes in in the middle of the day and says, you know, "Tonight, I need to have my liquor license extended." I guess what I'd like to see is in the ordinance that's built in where there has to be a, minimally, if we're going to allow this to happen, minimally, a certain timeframe that they have to have before they can just open it. They can't just come in in the morning and say, "I filled out the paperwork and the police reviewed it," and it's approved for that night. I think there needs to be a little bit of a window of time there, so that you have a chance to really review it.
Okay. Any additional comments? Alderman Dunn?
Just a question for the committee. Was there an examination, or why did the committee feel that a request for a temporary extension shouldn't go through committee? For those type of events that were called out as examples, minus Alderman Levin's surprise Super Bowl win, there seemed to be a lot of lead time to evaluate the event, to make the application, and then to have the committee examine it. So what would be the concerns or problems in running it through committee?
Alderman Healy, you want to respond?
To be honest, we didn't get to that level of detail. We didn't, or Alderman Mulliner's point, you know, a procedure question in terms of what exact steps would the liquor commissioner go through. We didn't get to that level of detail, nor do I think we want to. This is about giving the liquor commissioner, who is also mayor, the ability on his or her best judgment in consultation with public safety, the ability to extend a liquor license for one day for a given period of time. We didn't, I'll speak for myself. I wasn't interested in coming up with an over-ambitious review process. Personally, I have a lot of confidence that whether it's this liquor commissioner or future liquor commissioners are going to act in the best judgment of the city of Elmhurst like they do on a daily basis, or if there's a temporary request for a liquor license for a, you know, one event. So we didn't go to that level. So long would it answer is, we didn't go to that level of detail. You know, I certainly understand the minimum period of time, but I would trust that the liquor commissioner/mayor will take that into consideration and advisement that if somebody comes in at 2:00 on a Friday afternoon and says, "I got a wedding tonight," and they're big drinkers, and I want to stay open until 2:00, he's going to take that into consideration and more than likely make the right decision. And, you know, whatever you might think the right decision, I have confidence that the liquor commissioner, whether, again, whether it's this one or future ones, would make the right decision. So, you know, certainly Dunn and I had a comment. Certainly, we can, you know, potentially build some of that into the ordinance, but I'm not, if the ordinance doesn't have that, I'm not concerned.
Anyone who's not had a chance to speak yet? All right, going through a second round. Oh, sorry, Alderman Deuter?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, one of my questions or concerns is if this were available, and if we take the situation of a sporting event, wouldn't there be multiple restaurants, bars, liquor license holders who might be interested? And then in that case, if that's the case, are you getting multiple requests to approve the same thing? Or if it's okay for one, do we notify others that it's available? I mean, kind of how do we, if it is not just a special event like a wedding or something unusual that's happening just at one location, do we need to level the playing field to make sure that what's available to one for a special event can also be available to the other? And if it's this process, does that become too burdensome?
Alderman Healy?
Great question. I certainly understand where you're coming from about being fair and equitable. I'll tell you, the one thing I've learned from our bar and restaurant community, whether it was from the video... it was from the video gaming, video gaming conversation, or this conversation, those men and women are all connected, and, and once we make it known that it is the possibility of extending liquor licenses, they're all going to know. I don't think the burden is on us. I mean, certainly we'll do whatever we do, whether it's through the chamber commerce, the various business entities, to let them know that this is a possibility. We can change the application for, you know, the annual application for the liquor license. We can include that in there to make sure, but in terms of if this passes, you know, do we need to do something in the next couple of weeks, or whenever it's formally approved via ordinance to do that? I, I don't think so. I, I think that word gets out pretty effectively.
Alderman Bram?
Thank you. It was stated a little bit ago, Alderman Healy made comments a little bit ago in regards to an assumption that was made about what has been done in the past. And I quote from the Public Affairs and Safety Committee meeting minutes on Monday, December 12th, 2016, dot, 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 indicated that past and current liquor commissioners have approved these special requests for extended hours on their merits. It wasn't an assumption. The meeting minutes say so. In regards to this, it is open-ended. The report doesn't say about the fee, even though the meeting minutes did say about the fifty-dollar fee, about a timeframe, about a case-by-case basis. If one business wants it, what about the rest? What about police enforcement? How is the police going to know that this special request was made? And what about if, if the timeframe is a short timeframe? How are they going to be enforcing all these very variances, I'll call it, in regards to our current code today? It, I would say, makes their job ten times more difficult than what it is. They have no idea what is granted for any business out there, or if they do, it'll be a lot harder to keep track of them. So I find just the police enforcement a big safety risk. You know, talking about the current liquor commissioner, or future liquor commissioners, we can't judge on who's going to be sitting in the seat and having that role. None of us, not all of us, or none of us are going to be around in tens, ten, twenty years from now, making these decisions. We don't know who's going to be in the seat. That's why we have policies today, except Alderman Mulliner. That's why we have policies. That's why we codify things to make sure that these decisions are done on the merits of the request. This is way too open-ended, a lot way too, definitely not defined in many aspects. And I go back to, what is the point of our code? Our code is to lay out these rules for decisions could made, and there's no hint, no perception of any bias. Leaving it for, defined as good cause, leave it, even if there is no bias, the perception could be that there's bias in that decision. There's a request on the dais to add some of this language, or send it back to committee before the ordinance. It's, unless this report gets brought back to committee, I, I don't see an opportunity for that. We have to consider the safety of our residents, the safety of our law enforcement officers, as well as the safety and the fairness of all the businesses. There are legitimate questions in regards to how one business understands from the other. It's not the telephone game here. Either we're liable to communicate it to the rest of the business owners, or we're not. We're opening a can of worms that we're, I believe, that we are opening ourselves to lawsuits. I highly discourage moving forward as this is written today.
I'm going to, I don't know, metaphorically pass the gavel to Alderman York. So, there you go, Kevin. As sitting liquor commissioner, I just want to state a couple of facts and not get into the debate. As liquor commissioner, for the past three and a half years, I, to the best of my recollection, I've been approached twice to extend hours. One specifically was World Cup soccer. There was one bar owner in town who hosted a soccer club or something of that nature. And because it's World Cup and it was played, I don't even know it was played, they were requesting opening up, I think, two hours early on a weekend. That was, I'm just giving you the reasoning. That's what was given to me. I rejected it. The other one, best of my recollection, was, might have been World Cup hockey. And it was a different, bar owner approached me, same situation, wanted to open maybe a two or three hours early. I think they had a hockey club affiliation. I rejected that as well. So those are the two requests, in my opinion, that would have been addressed by what this report is asking for. As far as it relates to temporary licenses, as liquor commissioner, I do have the authority. I think the Parks does, People for Parks or something, what do they do?
Yeah, People for Elmhurst Park.
People for Elmhurst Park District, they host an event where they want to serve alcohol. That's the one that comes to mind when it comes to me issuing temporary, I'm sorry, liquor commissioner issuing temporary liquor licenses. If I issue a half a dozen a year, that's a lot, maybe, maybe three, I don't know. But that's, that's my role as liquor commissioner. As it relates to these special requests, I've had two in three and a half years, I rejected them both. So, can I have it back? Alderman York? I didn't step out of line, I appreciate it. Back to the conversation. Alderman Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Looking at the hours of liquor sales that are in our city website, I think this is much to do about nothing. Current liquor sales, Monday through Thursday, are six AM to 12:45 the following day, and on Friday and Saturday, six AM to 1:45. Sunday, it's 11:00 to 12:45. And to your example earlier, I think this is only in extreme cases where it's international competitions, World Cup of Soccer, World Cup of Hockey, or Olympics, or something similar, where there's a particular business that may feel part of their clientele would be served by them opening at that time. It has to make sense for the business, it has to make sense for people that want to frequent that establishment. I see no issue with this. I think you probably will get one or two requests a year, maybe, depending on what's going on in the sports world, but I'm okay with you as liquor commissioner granting this right, because in the end, I really don't think it's a big deal. Thank you.
Alderman Plomsky?
Mayor, I just wanted to answer to a couple of questions that I heard. One was about this, why could this not go through the committee process? And originally, this was presented to committee to address holidays, daylight savings, and special events. When it became apparent that the holidays and daylight savings are not an issue and not something that we would need to make a decision on immediately, that that was easily addressed in the code, in fact, two holidays are addressed in the code, then this really just focused on special events. So this would only be when our traditional process would not allow for a temporary permit. The part about weddings, and I think that was actually an example of what would not be a special event, weddings happen all the time. So you plan for a wedding, you work within the, you work within the hours established. And then the third question about how are police going to know, police are going to review these applications, so they would know they'd be the ones having input on this.
Alderman Levin?
I, I kind of wish they, the committee would take this back and just put some structure on it. It may come out in the ordinance, but, you know, the wedding one kind of struck me as, that was an example that raised concern for me, because to me, is this tape? A wedding's not a special occasion, you know, for a liquor license where, you know, someone comes, I can see the abuse there. Someone comes in and, you know, the mayor, and we've had incidents in the past, say, "Well, I'm having a wedding, I'd like to have liquor served till three," because, you know, it's a big wedding. And, you know, if there was some structure that showed what's a special event, you know, it's, and I'm not trying to legislate from up here, I just feel like it's so open-ended, and I don't have any concern with the current mayor, but there's the potential for a, and this is liquor, liquor is heavily regulated. It's not, you know, a permit to use a playground, or to close off your street, it's heavily regulated for a reason. So if there were at least some criteria that would say, what is this? I'm not, I don't even care, I'm not concerned about good cause. I mean, it's, to me, discretion's okay. I'm not concerned about public safety. I don't know that, you know, if the, you know, I think if the mayor's going to sign off and the police are going to review it, but there is the potential in the future that some mayor may not have good judgment. So at least if there was some criteria that would put some framework, the, the number, the fee is not in this report, the number of days in advance, is there any override to the mayor's decision? I, I don't know, I just feel like some structure should be there, and I don't, and maybe if we had asked the city attorney, are there other towns that do it just this way, where it's completely, completely up to the mayor?
Yes.
Alderman Bram?
Thank you. The last two items, I, I have to say, is, you know, there's, there's comments made on this isn't going to happen very often. Well, if it isn't going to happen very often, then it should follow a process. I mean, it's as simple as that. You know, World Cup doesn't happen all of a sudden, announced one week and happens the following weekend. It, it's known. The restaurant owners, the bar owners, they know that it's going to happen. They, they know in advance. Any of these events that at least have been utilized today, as an example, are known. And I, I'm not sure on why we would have something so open-ended if we know about these events largely ahead of time. And if it happens relatively infrequently, then that's even more reason, at least in my perspective, that it should be codified, and there should be a process tied to it. There were comments made by Alderman Healy earlier in regards to, when I made a statement of, under Chapter thirty-six, the liquor commissioner doesn't have this ability, and the comment was made that the previous report on the consent agenda, seven point one zero, is actually giving the permission or the ability for the liquor commissioner to do so. Well, if that is the case, I have great issue of that report. This report, to me, reads that it code reflects the most up-to-date, let me jump back a little bit, "To amend Elmhurst Municipal Code, Section Thirty-Six pertaining to liquor licenses to ensure the code reflects the most up-to-date and accurate information and is free from Scrivener's heirs." I mean, to give the liquor commissioner in this report additional abilities, or additional powers, and having that be the recommendation is hugely misleading. And I have huge issue if that is the reality that's coming out of this recommendation, this report. Because it is hugely misleading, and it didn't mention anywhere that that was occurring with this report, nor in the meeting minutes of the committee either, did I see that as well. And I don't want to get too far off of the actual issue at hand, but since it was brought up, I want to make sure that is, that is definitely emphasized for the record, that if that's what's coming out of that, that's not what's stated in that recommendation. And I will be looking at that ordinance very closely, because that looked to me, from all the meeting minutes and everything else, that these are Scrivener's heirs, fees, they talked about CPI, and not utilizing CPI, and just updating information. To give additional powers to liquor commissioner and something with that recommendation is wrong.
Okay. Alderman Honquist?
Thank you, Mayor. If, if we have this big of an issue with the person sitting in the mayor's seat, we've got much bigger problems. Could we please vote on this issue?
I have a passive call, call to question.
Very passive.
Any additional comments? Alright, Clerk Spencer. I'd ask you to call to vote.
Deuter?
Aye.
Sapatino?
Aye.
Leader?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Bram?
No.
Plomsky?
Aye.
York?
Aye.
Ludo?
Aye.
Healy?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Honquist?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Mulliner?
No.
Twelve ayes, two nays.
Twelve ayes, two nays, motion carries, agenda item seven point one one is approved. On to seven point one six. This is a report out of DP and Z. Clerk Spencer, I would ask that you read the recommendation.
It is therefore, the Development, Planning, and Zoning Committee recommends that the city council approve the applicant's request for an amended conditional use permit for a car wash and associated variations with the variation of signage not to exceed one hundred and twenty-five square feet, and to require the internal traffic pattern to permit existing, the car wash line before a customer reaches the car wash itself. The city attorney is hereby directed to prepare the necessary documents for city council approval, signed by Scott M. Levin, Chairman, Mark A. Mulliner, Vice Chairman, and Michael Honquist.
Okay, to put this before council, I will ask for a motion to approve the report and recommendation as read. Motion by Alderman Levin. Alderman Levin? Oh, there we go. Second by Alderman Mulliner. Alderman Levin, your report.
Thank you, Mayor. Obviously, this is a request that came out of the Development, out of the Planning and Zoning Commission. There were several requests for variances that were included in this report that they sent us. One was for changes in setback. It's a fairly narrow lot for building, there didn't seem to be much controversy about the change in setback. There were two other components which created significant discussion. The first, which was spoken to at some length tonight, had to do with the stacking ordinance and a variation to that. And I will say, I don't think there's any confusion, or there shouldn't have been any confusion, I'm not sure what the comments were made in terms of what ordinance, because what cited in the, the report, and what we looked at, is specifically the parking requirements, which is the stacking here, for car washes, mechanical, or self-service. And it is true, there was a significant reduction in what was requested in that stacking requirement. There was a lot of discussion about whether the ordinance is outdated or not, and whether the, you know, there's different kinds of car washes, a lot of them are two, you know, there are two cars going through a shorter tunnel, some of them, you've seen, are the spray washes, and so there's different requirements. The applicant came up with a traffic study that was professionally done and supported its case. The, there was some opposition, it was all citing to Jet Bright and what it was doing, or what wasn't doing in its other locations. We requested that our city engineer take a look at what, to review the report, sort of as a objective opinion on it, and we went through it, and there were probably, there were about, you know, five, there were four major points with some sub-points. There was a concern that if the traffic was turning in, and it was going through the car wash, there was no opportunity for someone to exit the car wash line and get out of there, which could cause some problems. So there was an amendment at our committee to say there had to be a cutout so that people could get out of the circulation line. We also, and I will say, there was no traffic study put in in opposition to the one that was done by the applicant, and, but we nonetheless asked our engineer to look at it. I think the committee relied primarily upon our own traffic engineer and his opinion as to whether or not this would cause a problem. I think one of the things that was talked about in, in the committee is, I think very, there was, we talked about it for at least two full meetings, there were discussions, things that were looked into, and I, I feel that, the committee feels confident that it's appropriate to rely on our traffic engineer. The other component of the request was for signage. There's a, the permitted signage total would be a hundred square feet, the request was a hundred and eighty square feet, which is a hundred and eighty percent of what would be allowed. This is sort of a compromise. I think, I, in particular, did not feel like the justification was there for larger signage. It came back for a twenty-five percent over, and that was the compromised position of the committee. I will say that we have to be respectful for all of the businesses, and I think we paid attention to what they said, but we did pay, I think, some attention to the fact that the, the sole person who was in significant opposition is a competitor, and it's, it's something that's, you know, I, I understand that the motivation is safety, but the competitors... but the competitor's business itself has a cigarette business that even today, I believe, had backup on New York Road. So we take it objectively. We also recognize if there's potential bias. I also note that there were at least two other car wash businesses that looked at this site who deemed it to be appropriate. And I, we all do some offline research, and I consulted with someone I know who's in the business who actually looked at that site to say, is it realistic to put it on here? Is there a safety, you know, problem? Can this equipment handle this kind of volume? And I was told that it was. So I checked it through other sources, too. So I understand that there was a letter from Jet Bright that came in after the commission concluded its evidentiary hearing. We looked at it, we considered it, but we, at the end, decided we would rely upon our own engineer's report, and that's what we've done. So we submitted for your consideration.
Okay. Additional comments as it relates to this report? Alderman Palmsky?
Thank you, Mayor. I think the traffic issue was addressed. Thank you. I wanted to, though, thank the committee for taking a second look at the sign variation request and reducing the square footage, as I think it fits better with the North York Plan and the idea to reduce the visual clutter. So, thank you.
Alderman Bram?
Thank you. As Alderman Levin already summarized very well, I mean, this is a very complex issue with a lot of components to this issue. Signage was definitely one of those components, stacking being the other, and a conditional use just in general to allow for a car wash in this area to begin with. Alderman Levin already made comments of this, and I want to reference those comments, that there is a, what I always kindly reference it as, is the cigarette hut on North York. And that has in the past, and I haven't seen it as of late, but it has in the past caused stacking on York Road, which is right next to a Wendy's, which is therefore right next to this empty lot where this proposed car wash is, and next to that, going further north, I believe, is the bank. This is right off the intersection of Grand and York, which is heavily traveled. Any stacking, as we've already witnessed by Delta Sonic, is a huge concern. Delta Sonic on North Avenue has always seen, and it's grandfathered and it's been there for a while, at least ever since I've been in town, stacking on North Avenue. And I'm sure, not that I have evidence of this, I didn't ask for the chief to pull accident reports in that area, but I'm sure there's accidents because of that. This is a huge concern for me, and this is my ward, and I'm happy to see additional redevelopment being proposed. But I have a huge concern, one of which was the signage, and I'm glad to see the committee decided to make a request to have that variance reduced relatively significantly. But I don't think we should take so lightly the stacking issue. Ever since this issue has come to the forefront, the petitioner or the applicant has spoken with me and shown me the designs, and the designs look really nice. And I really, at that time, said, "It looks good to me, but I need to see the details." The individuals who objected, who also own a car wash on North York, has also spoken with me and presented some interesting information. The interesting information is about the stacking and the large variance due to that. I frequented the Jet Bright car wash three times now, two or three times now, on Roosevelt Road in Villa Park, because it has been utilized within the minutes, and the discussion here is a good example. The difference between Jet Bright and what is proposed before us today is that Jet Bright car wash has three lanes from the time you enter that business, all the way up until you finally single file into the actual car wash itself. This is proposed to be one lane, kind of for a short distance, spread out to, I think, two lanes, two or three lanes, and then converge once again. That's a huge difference. Jet Bright, at least in Villa Park, also has an exit, a separate exit than the entrance. That's a huge difference. This is a sheared ingress egress for individuals to use the car wash and individuals leaving the car wash. I know there is a modification in the request to say that if you enter the stacking line and decide not to go, I don't know how often that happens, but you can back out. Well, I don't know how many people are going to know that, but once you're in the line, and then if you decide to back out, and then you're going against the traffic that are backing into the free vacuuming stalls. I think that actually adds more conflict, maybe within the business compared to out on York Road, but that's adding additional conflict. Yes, there's been traffic studies, and I would have to lean to say, I don't know if our third-party consultant really gave an overwhelming yes. I think it was more of, "I don't see too much issue, but I think there was actually a statement in there, but I'm not a traffic engineer," or something similar to that. Yes, the petitioner, the applicant, did do a traffic study, but with that said, we need to be concerned with the safety. Traffic is going to be turning off of Grand Avenue and coming into the gas station, the bank, and this facility, all which are going to draw cars in and out. If you haven't been there, it's a nightmare today. If this actually draws the number of cars that it's stating that it's going to draw, it's an accident waiting to happen. I want to see it developed, but I really, truly believe that this is trying to squeeze too much in too little of an area. We talk about the North York Plan in regards to the streetscaping and everything else. Ten years ago, I think I submitted to redevelop. This is the entrance to North Elmhurst. We want to beautify that area. What is this going to do? Are we going to be able to put up planters? We're going to kill the line of sight. We're just shooting ourselves in the foot. We're going against the North York Streetscape Plan, the North York Corridor Plan, and it's just, to me, a safety nightmare. We've seen it already on Delta Sonic's property on North Avenue, and I'm very concerned that it will be just as bad, if not worse. I applaud the petitioner for this. I like the design. I stand by those statements I made without any information before me then, but I just feel that this is a safety issue. This isn't a small request. It's not a request of reducing our code requirement for five spaces, or 5% or 10%. This is 42% reduction. We have our code in there for a reason. Could it be outdated? Maybe. But shame on us. We need to stand by our code, and if we're going to do a variance, it can't be 42%. I'm sadly against this due to the safety concerns of how great of a variance they're requesting due to the stacking.
Alderman Levin?
Just want to clarify a couple of things, because it might be helpful. First, the, it was, Colter was our traffic engineer who we consulted, so he is, he is our traffic engineer, Brent Colter. And also want to clarify, we're not saying back up. There's a turnout, so that if you're going through the lane, instead of going through the wash, you can cut out early and come around and exit without having to go through the wash. So I wanted to add that. I think in terms of the plan, we don't pick every business that goes on there. I feel it is consistent with the plan. It's going to be a nicely-built, attractive facility. We looked at the plans. I don't know that car washes are in, I don't know, we put out, you know, a request for proposals to have someone bring a car wash to town, but people use them, and obviously there's a, there's a lot of interest, because I know that there were three different applicants that wanted to put one in that area, so it's an area that seems to need an upgraded car wash. So I just want to add those comments.
Okay. Any additional comments? Alderman Bram?
Just to clarify my statement, my statement in regards to why I believe it's against the plan or doesn't go along with the plan, part of our plan is to reduce the number of ingress egresses along this corridor, which has a ton. This is what, at least I would deem, if not increasing, widening and increasing the number of cars and traffic into the larger, and I would deem it, multiple ingress egress into this area. So yes, I do believe it's against it, the very minimal, the Streetscape Plan, possibly as well, I believe at least as well, the North Corridor Plan.
Alderman Dunn?
I guess my main concern with this, with the car wash project was, is it consistent with the North York Plan and the Streetscape Plan? And based on the information I've seen and what staff has provided, that this is within a commercial corridor, it's a redevelopment site, and some might think we have too many car washes up there. A little while ago, we had too many yogurt shops in town, and so that's the free market, and I'm sure these companies have done their, their studies, market studies on what the potential business is. So I don't have, I don't have an issue with that. And as far as the curb cuts go, I know in particular, in the plan, we want to reduce curb cuts. So I'm sure in the, in the design of this additional ingress egress, that will be considered because, first and foremost to me, other than the safety, is that this is consistent with our plan, and I believe it is.
Okay. Any other comments? Alderman Wagner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question for the chair, if I may.
Go ahead and ask the question, we'll see who responds.
Well, I want to find out if there's any operational differences in terms of sizes between what's already being compared to Jet Bright in Villa Park versus this proposal. Are they similar in size and throughput in terms of car?
Mr. Chairman, any knowledge of Jet Bright and Villa Park and how it compares?
Yes, I've washed my car there, Mayor. I don't, we actually, I don't know if I can pull it up real fast, but we actually had the actual, we had the actual dimensions before us when we looked at this, and I don't know if I can pull them up real quickly. But, I mean, there's no question that the, there was an extent, that there was an extension of a widening of at least one of them because the Jet Bright owner felt that it was not, that he was having backup. And I, you know, I wrote down 600 by 265, and I'm not sure if that's, I'm sorry, I had 238 by 200, but, you know, when we asked the engineer, you know, how they compare, you know, he really wasn't in a position to do that. He wasn't looking at two competing traffic reports and trying to see which one he felt, you know, if they were in conflict, to tell us which one was the one that we ought to be relying on. He looked at this one and made his own comments. So they're all fairly narrow lots, but I can't, I can't answer your question exactly because I don't know the exact dimensions.
Alderman Wagner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, yeah, a quick follow-up on that. I'm having some of the same concerns that Alderman Bram has already kind of voiced, and I, too, had met with the current occupants of 954. One of the interesting things, you know, in terms of the backup there, I think that this could be one of those great projects that be five years down the road, like, why did they ever put that there? But I don't know. I usually like when something gets the commission approval and it goes to DPZ and you got a report signed by all three members and it's been vetted properly, at least appears to be. I never really like to go against the grain very much, but I'm struggling with this letter from this President DeLisandro from Jet Bright, and he's saying, you know, "We've made some early mistakes in our business process, and we learned. And the size of the property that we have now is no less than an acre and three-quarters in size." So an acre, if you look at it, I think it's around 43,000 feet, square feet. And this property's only 40,000 square feet. I'm just wondering, would the committee consider maybe looking at this one more time with some additional vetting on the sizes and stuff, and maybe having the city engineer take another look? Or correct me if I'm wrong.
One of our committee members will respond to you.
Alderman Honquist, you care to chime in?
Yes. So to your concern, Alderman Wagner, we held this over from a first meeting to a second meeting specifically on the stacking issue, because I had the same concern, and we did get that letter at the time of our meeting. And we had that, we had city staff go back to Colter, and then we had city engineer Johnson take a look at it and vet the plan. There's other information that I can't pull off the top of my head that the, unfortunately, that the group that's proposing this had a chance to express in our meeting, both in the length of the lanes and the way the traffic would move that satisfied our concerns. So we really didn't see an issue with stacking. That was really the primary reason that we held it. The secondary reason we held it was for the signage that we've already discussed, that Alderman Levin was comfortable with. So those were the two issues that we discussed at length, and in both cases, after multiple meetings, we felt would be adequately addressed. So I just wanted to chime in for that, for you. Thank you.
Alderman Deuter, did you have your hand up?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to comment and make sure I'm looking at this correctly. Alderman Levin mentioned that the Villa Park comparable that we've been talking about is 200 by 238, and if I'm looking at the site plan correctly, this site is 100, but it's 410 feet deep? Is that correct? The depth is 410 feet?
Yeah, it's a long lot. I think it's 40,000, and the other one was 47,000.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Alderman Bram?
Thank you. One of the things, and this is just to maybe clarify some questions that might be remaining, is the commission, not the committee, but the commission, it was, I'm not saying it would change the recommendation coming out of the commission, but there was five out of nine in attendance, and one did vote against this proposal. And again, I don't know, and nobody knows if that would have changed things if everybody was there, but I wanted to make sure it was clear that in this case, it was not unanimous coming out of the commission. And there was five members present out of nine for that, that meeting in itself when the recommendation came out. The other thing in regards to the facility on Roosevelt Road in Villa Park, the, one of the main differences that I saw was, when you enter, you're entering in three lanes immediately. The other main thing is when you're exiting, it's on its own separate road that goes west for about a good, I don't know, I'm ballparking, 60, 70 feet. So there's no stacking due to coming out of the car wash and trying to get out the same ingress egress. It's a separate ingress egress compared to what this is being proposed here. So that site has a separate exit? You could exit as well out of the same ingress egress, but it has a separate exit and has a separate entrance. So that really mitigates a lot of the concerns I would have if it was designed in that manner because of the free-flowing of cars entering and leaving. And you could even stack in that case, and I've seen it when I've used it, I was the third car, trying to exit the facility. The other thing in regards to the depth of this lot, I believe, from the diagram only, but there looked to be some type of detention area or something in the back of the lot where it's not being utilized for stacking or for the car wash in itself. So you can't do the actual configure, or utilize the measurements of 100 by 410 because a good chunk of that, or, I don't know about a good, but a chunk of that is utilized for what looked to be some type of detention area.
Okay. Any other comments? Clerk Spencer?
Leader.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Oh, I have the wrong sheet. I have the wrong sheet here.
Let's start over.
Deuter.
Are we in the right sheet?
I'm going to alter it.
You're going to roll with this?
Yeah.
Okay.
Bear with me. Deuter.
Aye.
Sapatino.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Bram.
No.
Palmsky.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Honquist.
Aye.
Wagner.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Okay. Thirteen ayes, one nays.
One day, motion carries. Agenda item 7.16 is approved. On to committee reports, 8.1. It's a report out of finance, I believe. Clerk Spencer, I'd ask that you read the recommendation.
It is therefore the recommendation of the Finance, Council Affairs, and Administrative Services- to the municipal code of ordinances changing the water rate, sewer rate, and capital investment recovery charges as outlined above, effective for usage billed on or after January 3, 2017. The FCAAS committee further recommends that the city attorney prepare an amendment to the municipal code of ordinances to include both cubic meter rates per thousand and per thousand gallon rates for fiscal year 2017 as outlined above. Signed by Kevin L. York, Chairman, Bob Dunn, Vice Chairman, Noel P. Toledo, and Mark P. Sabatino.
Okay. To put this before council, I ask for a motion to approve the report and recommendation is read. Motion by Alderman York, second by Alderman Dunn. Alderman York.
Thank you, Your Honor. There's a lot of information in the report. There's a lot of information attached to the report and kind of outlines the detail that city staff put into preparing the information that we use to base our decision on. Obviously, in a perfect world, you'd rather not see any user fee rates ever go up. That's a perfect world. Unfortunately, what we're confronted with here are primarily two issues. Number one, we've got several, we've got tens of millions of dollars of improvements, capital improvements to make in the water treatment plant specifically. We've upped our game in operating costs in replacing water mains and sewer lines. And we have an obviously aging infrastructure that's caused all those. And then the final point is, is we've got a municipal utility fund that has a cash balance that's not even in the neighborhood of where it needs to be as far as what we would consider to be a safe operating range. So that's the basis for the recommendation for the water rates, sewer rates, and CERC rates that this committee is making. And we will continue to work on this. We have some additional concerns on looking forward into the future and how we fund some of these major expenditures. But the point is, unless we adjust the rates now, the city is going to be subsidizing water and sewer service and we didn't, none of us found that acceptable. I'd like to thank city staff for responding quickly to the committee's requests. Several committee members made really good requests on additional information and how the impending capital improvements that we're going to make are going to affect water usage and billing going forward. And city staff responded very, very well. We've tried to incorporate those into our models to smooth it where we can. But the fact remains that this is a user fee. And if we don't increase it, we're going to be subsidizing water. Ask for your support.
Okay. Thank you, Alderman York. Comments or questions? Clerk Spencer.
Doiter.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Palmsky.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Hahnquist.
Aye.
Wagner.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays, motion carries. Agenda item 8.1 is approved. Onto 8.2. 8.2 is a report out of DPZ. Clerk Spencer, I'd ask that you read the recommendation.
Therefore, the Development Planning and Zoning Committee recommends that the city council approve a lesser amount of $60,000 to contribute to the facade and build out of the property at 563 through 601 North York to include clawback and payback provision within, clawback slash payback provision within additional commitment to close the curb cut estimated at $15,000. The city attorney is hereby directed to prepare the necessary documents for city council approval. Signed by Scott M. Levin, Chairman, Mark A. Mulliner, Vice Chairman, and unsigned by Michael Hahnquist.
Okay. To put this before council, I ask for a motion to approve the report and recommendation is read. Motion by Alderman Levin, second by Alderman Mulliner. Alderman Levin, your report.
Thank you. This is another one where the committee spent a good amount of time reviewing it. We had at least two full meetings and a partial meeting. So you heard some discussion tonight. This is a brew point that has a coffee shop downtown. They're proposing to open a roasting facility. And what's there right now is a more of a, less of a loading dock with a curb cut that leads up to a garage door. They're asking, their original ask was $100,000. And the project is to put in this roasting facility. I'll give you the pluses and some of the concerns and tell you why we came to this As you see in the report, if this was a business that was operating in the central business district, which I recognize it's not, it would be entitled to a $10,000 retail grant and up to a $50,000 facade grant. They're gutting the whole facility. And so that is what was possible. It is a TIF area. The problem we have right now is there are no programs set up. It's a relatively new TIF. The curb cut, as you'll see, is part of this, is sort of on the side, is the city, as we discuss in committee, wants to get that curb cut out anyway. The landlord is not willing to have it taken out unless he knows there's a tenant in there that is going to operate, that won't be using, using it. So there, that was an incentive that the committee agreed to put in, is that we would take care of getting that curb cut put aside. As you heard from some of the comments tonight, it's a very community-involved business. It has the potential to grow and to bring new people to the community in terms of employees. It ties in as a nice fit with, first we have our Marianos, we had our LA Fitness, and this is sort of developing in the same area. And this does fit precisely, in my opinion, into the plan, our North York plan in terms of access for pedestrians, street access, and sort of that retail aspect that it has. They've talked about tying in with, have you heard from, with the arts, the library, Elmhurst College. So it's a very community-oriented business. There was a struggle on this one because we have to look at where we draw the line to say, on one hand, we are incenting businesses to come and to open and not, we're not a bank. And that's kind of where I started out with at the first meeting, and I kind of came around. So the danger is we don't want to open the floodgates so that every business comes to town and says, we want to open a business and we just want some money to make it happen for us. These were somewhat, we look at it on a case-by-case basis, and there was a feeling that this was a business that deserved the support. To me, and they need to move this forward to get this off the dime, one of the critical components, in my opinion, is working out the clawback, the payback. And we talked about a couple of ideas. There's a concern if they sold the business and made a profit, which I'm not saying it's a simple formula, shouldn't the city get paid back? If there's a way to pay back some of the monies and the business is successful, looking at what would be the equivalent of a percentage sales lease so that as it makes money and it has a very optimistic business plan, that some of those monies would come back to the city. So that component would need to be fleshed out. It's an important component. But if it's approved tonight, it would allow the applicant to go to the landlord and say, we're going down the road. And we could then work through staff with some committee participation perhaps in flushing that out before the report comes out. That's all.
Okay. Alderman Mulliner.
Just a couple of additional comments that I want to make about this. One of the things is that this is, as Alderman Levin said, something that would be very similar to what we're doing in the downtown as far as the facade and the grant programs, which we don't apply up there right now. But we do know that our development team is looking right now at what type of incentives would be appropriate up there. The other thing that I want to mention is that in our downtown plan, one of the things that was discussed is that if we did have a facade program, this particular location would be an ideal location for that facade program to be implemented. Additionally, I want to say that this, this is not just a location where it's going to bring in the employees of that business, but it's also going to be a destination for other individuals throughout the western suburbs to come to work on roasting coffee or whatever they do up in those locations. I don't know all the details of it, but I know that there'll be additional people coming into that area.
You want to drink coffee, do you?
One of the things, one of the things that we want to do is make sure that we're creating an environment for those younger business entrepreneurs to come in and start working and create some ideas. And this is one that I thought was rather creative, and I thought it would certainly help to bring more interest in that area up there, that, that north TIF district that we're beginning to put in. So I wholeheartedly support this as a step forward.
Hey. Additional comments? Alderman Wagner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a little clarification. Did, are we, we're, if we approve this report, the majority report, you said then it's going to go back and we can talk to staff and come up with another report around the clawback?
The intent is we would come back with an ordinance that includes a clawback. It's sort of, usually if there's some sort of development agreement, it's the same sort of process. Sorry, Mayor, I don't know if I was called on or not, but usually the staff develops it, maybe talk to the committee members individually to formulate that clawback deal that would then be presented in the ordinance that would then come back to the council next meeting or so.
Alderman Wagner.
I certainly understand, I certainly get it. But is that like the proper way that that should happen? Shouldn't you have all that?
Let me ask you. Let me clarify. I think I understand your question. I want to see if I understand the answer. So the question, I think that's causing a little confusion here, Alderman Levin, is I think there is two options of clawbacks proposed in the report. And you're saying, just clarify, you're saying that if this report passes, our legal folks would craft an ordinance that would have a clawback in it? It could be defined a couple of different ways at this point?
I think it's, I think legal would step in, you're one step removed, I think, as usually happens, our economic development people would negotiate and frame the clawback agreement in terms, not legal terms, but in terms of what it's going to be. And then it would be delivered to legal to put it into.
But it wouldn't go back to your committee?
No.
Okay. So I would say, to answer your question, Alderman Wagner, I think anything's possible. In the past, when we've had clawbacks, they've probably been one step better defined than this. I think that's, but what I'm hearing committee saying is they have a recommendation that has, provides guidance in there that would allow our development folks to work with legal and create a clawback in it. So I think either one's possible legally. Yes?
So I just don't know, I'm not, we don't really debate ordinance. Usually, and by the time it becomes an ordinance to debate, we're going to have this clawback proposal in there that'll be agreed to, you know, from staff and committee. But we're not going to debate the clawback in the ordinance, right? I certainly have the right to vote no for it, but it just doesn't seem like the right way to do it, that's all. Maybe it's me.
Okay. Alderman Doiter.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that the committee considered the clawback or recapture. And, you know, I would guess that the reason why there isn't, it's, all the details are not present, because I don't think we've done something like this before on this type of deal. I think we've used a clawback in provisions where someone moves and someone's no longer in Elmhurst. But I think what the purpose of this is, is to say if there is either a capital event because they sell, or if there is, you know, extraordinary success, which we hope that they experience, we have the opportunity to get back some of the city's dollars. And I think that's a, I think that's kind of new territory. And I appreciate that the committee considered it. And I liken this to a redevelopment agreement where we, you know, whether it's been TIF deals in the past or any other project that has a redevelopment agreement, we're not, the committee isn't reviewing point by point those details. I think at some, occasionally, the finance committee has asked one to come back when there has been something that is unusual and we really want to have a chance to review that language in committee. Certainly, committee has, you know, could choose to do that. But I think it happens a lot that we have details that are, follow the direction of the report but aren't specified by the report.
Alderman York.
Thank you, Your Honor. So Alderman Doiter pointed it out, but I'm sure that the DPZ committee would do the same kind of work on it that the finance committee used to do on it. And if it, that they would look at the ordinance. The ordinance just doesn't, you know, fly through. They have the, every opportunity to review the ordinance to make sure that all the salient points that were considered are actually in the ordinance. And then we, as elected officials, at any time can pull the ordinance off and say, this just isn't the way I understood it was going to be, and ask for reconsideration. So I'm not concerned with that. I have other concerns, but we'll talk about those later.
Alderman Dunn.
This, this particular parcel or project is in TIF 4. And, but I'm getting the sense that this is not a TIF incentive. Normally, looking at our TIF policy, we use, we generally come out with a pretty strong clawback. And it's, the preferred financing is pay-as-you-go. The applicant makes an investment in the property. It increases the value of it, which the city fully supports. And as that EAV increment grows, we share in that with the applicant. So question for the committee is where is this $75,000 coming from?
Alderman Levin, care to respond?
Yeah, this is a TIF project. And because there's not a facade grant, there's not, you know, a, the traditional central business district programs. And we did review the TIF policy. I'm not saying this is, you know, similar to many of the other ones we've done. It doesn't line up exactly with a Han Street or an Opus if that one gets done or et cetera. But it's coming out of here, out of the TIF 4.
So they would, the request in the committee proposal is to provide them the funding immediately right off the bat then? And it's not a pay-as-you-go structure?
That would be correct.
Alderman Bram.
Thank you. Kind of going back to the clawback, I want to touch on that a little bit. I have the same concerns that Alderman Wagner voiced. It's, it's kind of one or the other. There's two options thrown down and going in. I don't know which one is going to be in the ordinance. I don't know if a committee has ever reviewed an ordinance before it was thrown on the agenda. Yes, all of us as elected officials can vote no on an ordinance, but you don't want to be that reactive. You want to make sure it's clear on a report. And I obviously, well, not obviously, I have a preference out of one of the two clawbacks. Mine isn't about the sale within a five-year period. I hope that they don't sell. I hope that they're successful. So I would, I don't feel that is the appropriate provision. Typically, when we see these, I mean, it's tied to a sales tax incentive. This is not a sales tax incentive. This is, you know, a TIF request. Isn't it appropriate, TIF request, is the dollar amount appropriate or not? I'll get to that a little bit later. But I have concern on the vagueness of the report or the recommendation, that oh, it could be one of two options. I think the report needs to be defined on which option is being recommended. And we can vote on that recommendation unless it was the plan to have both of those in the ordinance moving forward. And the committee could speak to that if they so choose. One of the other things I just want to put out there is, you know, it's been mentioned that this is a, or this could potentially be a destination location. You know, I guess to a certain degree, it's not a Marianos, it's not an LA Fitness-type destination. And if it became to that size, I'd be concerned. This is a little itty-bitty strip mall with very little parking. It's not even the front or the back of the strip mall, it's on the side of the strip mall. So I would be concerned if it actually became too popular because then we would have some parking issues, some severe parking issues. But in regards to the, the report and the clawback, I would like some clarity before moving forward. I'm not sure.
Okay, kind of a circuitous route to get there, but as is our policy, if chairman and committee wants to bring a report back to committee, we allow that. So we're going to stop conversation and we're gonna allow them to bring it back to committee, which makes, I believe, minority report moot as well. Mr. Hanquist.
It seems that way, sir.
Okay, so we're gonna indulge committee chairman and vice chairman, pull back the report, the other report doesn't apply. Onto reports. My report is that it's 10 to 10. Happy holidays, merry Christmas, see you all in the new year. City Manager Grabowski.
No reports, sir.
All right, onto agenda item 10. Everything, what we've been working on for the past two and a half months. This is an ordinance, this is our budget. This is how it's normally presented to us and formally approved. To move forward, I would ask Clerk Spencer to read the ordinance.
A Budget and Appropriation Ordinance for the City of Elmhurst for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2017 and ending on December 31, 2017.
Put this before council, I ask for a motion to approve the ordinance as read. Motion by Alderman York, second by Alderman Dunn. Alderman York, any comments?
Just one real brief one. We've spent a lot of time working on this budget, not only the council, but city staff and everybody involved. The document we have before us and we vetted thoroughly and we're getting ready to approve this evening is a good document and I just want to recognize everybody who's involved in it in the process. It's a plan, something that we have to work with for the next year and I'm very excited about it. Thank you.
Fantastic. All right, any other comments? Clerk Spencer, I ask you to call the roll.
Deuter.
Aye.
Sapatino.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Bram.
No.
Oh, my God.
Okay.
Palmsky.
Aye.
Do you want to correct that?
We're done. Just continue with the vote.
York.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Hanquist.
Aye.
Wagner.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
13 ayes, one nays.
13 ayes, one nay, motion carries. Agenda item 10.1 is approved. Onto other business. Any other business? Motion to adjourn. Motion by Alderman Wagner, second by Alderman Deuter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned. Thank you.